Good afternoon and welcome to this January 5th work session of the Vestaby Hills Board of Education. I'd like to first thank Alicia Huntsberger and her staff for arranging this meeting for us in beautiful New Genoa, and I'd like to thank the PTO Council for bringing the refreshments. We are always so grateful for your support. And thank you all for coming and being a part of our search for our superintendent. As most of you know, we began our search back in the fall by hiring AASB to conduct the search force. Dr. Terry Jenkins was our lead consultant who helped meetings and focus groups to help us determine the selection criteria. Additionally, there was an online survey that was enormously successful and gave us a lot of good feedback on what the community wanted in their next superintendent. The search was then launched on a nationwide basis and over the next month, a lot of work was done to seek out and recruit qualified candidates. The applications were received and reviewed by AASB and the top four finalists were presented to us by Dr. Jenkins at our December 13th board meeting. Interview dates were then arranged and I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Todd Freeman to meet this afternoon to begin his public interview. Our format will be the board members to ask him a series of questions that will help us get to know about Freeman's viewpoints. We've compiled a somewhat lengthy list of fifteen questions, so Dr. Freeman, if you're ready, I'll start us off. Could you tell us again about your background as an educator? And it would be helpful if you could include some experiences you think are particularly relevant to Vestaby Hills.
Yes ma'am. Thank you for having me this evening too, and today's been a wonderful day. In twenty-five years of education, I've had a lot of opportunities and benefited from a lot of great people and a lot of great mentors. I spent twenty years in the Auburn City Schools. I was hired in nineteen ninety-three and I spent ten years as a social studies teacher. And for some reason, the superintendent gave me an opportunity to serve as what would become the Executive Director for Operations and Services. And I say that kiddingly because a large part of my responsibilities had to do with construction and facilities and I'm not sure I even knew what a facia or a SOFIT was, but over the course of five years, we did fifty million dollars of construction. But the operational services included a lot of things specific to student supports like the maintenance division, child nutrition program, transportation. I was the hearing officer for discipline and attendance, and so all of those parts, health services included, but the bulk of my time obviously was in the construction facility side. And part of that was building a lot of things. We built classroom additions, multimedia centers, cafeterias. We did performing arts renovations of maintenance transportation facilities. We expanded our central office. The biggest project we did was the one that I finished up on, which was building a new elementary school. And so while we were building that elementary school, I was charged by the superintendent with making sure that was done and also developing the zone lines for a new elementary. So we had four, one through five grade schools, and this was going to be the fifth one to come online. So my responsibilities during that time were pretty busy in that we were doing the school and also developing the zones for who would come to the school. So that was a great experience and a great learning opportunity. And I would tell you that with zoning comes learning a lot about your community. At the expense of sounding archaic, I had a computer system that helped me design it, but I literally traveled every street, every corner, every circle, looking at every house so I could personalize what's on a sheet of paper. That was a great learning experience for me and that is very important when you're talking about divisions of neighborhoods, divisions of streets and things of that nature. So that's what we finished up on, and I guess you'd say we finished with a bang doing the zone lines, but part of that was reconfiguration of staff and I was tangentially involved in some pieces of that as well. But in two thousand and ten, the high school principal retired, who was one of my mentors and was an excellent principal. I applied for that position and I was fortunate enough to be given the opportunity to serve. So I served as the principal of a high school that's comparable in many ways to Vestaby Hills High School. We had about five hundred students in each of our classes. We were a ten, twelve grade school. Our ninth grade school had already moved to the eighth and ninth building because of space issues several years before, so I was very familiar in working with the ninth grade transitions to high school. But this was a school system that mirrored in a lot of ways, as I said, Vestaby Hills. In terms of the demographics, we had about forty different languages that were spoken in the homes of students. About eight percent of our population were English as second language speakers, so that diversity was very present. We had a robust advanced placement program and an international backlog program. There was about thirty of those different programs that we offered that you could test and get college credentials in. We had a strong arts program as well. And we tried to improve upon those things. That was something that was very important to me, to improve upon the areas that we were particularly doing well in, so we added AP courses in science and math. Those were some of the things we did as well. That was a great experience. To leave there took something that would be special to me because I served in a community where there was a lot of community support, there was a lot of parent engagement, there were high expectations for students, and there was excellence among the faculty and staffs. So those pieces would be important to me to go to any system. But I was asked to apply for and did for Silicaga City Schools and was fortunate to be given that opportunity four and a half years ago. Since then, we've done some things that you're doing now. We finished up about twenty million dollars of construction this month. So that's been a big part of it. We have done a lot of work in terms of securing additional funding that has helped us in our work, in our relationship with our city government. That's been a positive step as well. And I would conclude by saying, from an academic perspective, we've been doing things similar to what you are in Vestaby Hills. We've added programs to enhance the math and sciences, AMSTI being one of those things. So we've taken a lot of similar routes. The similarities, I would once again say to you about the systems I've worked in, is while their demographics are very different, there was great community and government support at the local level. There was tremendous parent engagement and that's certainly a positive. There were high expectations for students and there was a lot of support to try to help them do the things and be the people they wanted to be.
Dr. Freeman, can you give us examples of how a superintendent can positively impact student achievement?
Well, the one sentence answer for me is that every, this is about student achievement. Every child can learn if they're given the right environment to learn. And as a superintendent or CEO, executive of an organization, my responsibilities are look at the ways to best provide that environment. Certainly, I want to lead from the front, from an academic perspective, but the business side is to look at the whole picture. So there are primarily three things that I'm going to look at doing. I'm looking at the equity of opportunities that we have for our students. I'm looking at the excellence of our staff, and I'm looking at the engagement of staff and students. Just speaking about our current position, in terms of equity, we've looked at the conditions that need to exist in order for a system for students to thrive. And by that, I mean academic supports, facilities, ways to help our students that are lagging behind when they start. So we've added pre-K program into our school. We've added a literacy grouping design in our K-2 schools by repurposing some of our paraprofessionals. We have made some changes in the schedules that we run at our middle school to enhance how much time we give to math and to English, so we work on those important skills. We have taken a lot of steps like providing breakfast programs that we didn't have a few years ago. Half of our population in our K-2 school eats breakfast. That's pretty important to start the day off right. So those are conditions when I speak about that I think are important. Even the school calendar is important. How many days of instruction you have, how many days of opportunities for teachers to learn are important. So that excellent piece is a big deal to us. So we have worked hard to establish what you call professional learning communities, the same kind of concept. We look at it from a vertical perspective because we're a smaller system, so I want all of our schools talking about the K-12 idea of getting our students college and career ready. We've invested, as I'll speak to you a little bit later about, in some ways to help our teachers with advanced degrees and certifications, all part of what I think is a part of excellence. And then finally, from an engagement perspective, we've been invested a lot of energy in doing things that are meaningful to students because the students that sit in the classes every day, we want to engage them with things that are relevant to them, that are necessarily project or inquiry based where they're really having to think beyond the knowledge base and think conceptually about learning. And so we've done a lot of things with the STEM vein in particular. I will focus on that, from grades three through twelve. We've come up with a couple of veins of learning that are health science areas and pre-engineering because not that all of our students will do that, but the skills that it teaches them, we think enhance the environment. And we've had good results in Silicaga. Our formative assessments with our K-2 students, because of the work with pre-K and the work with literacy, we're seeing significant gains in their ability to read. That's been important. We've seen twelve percent gain in science at the elementary school since we implemented AMSTI and supported our teachers. We've had ten percent increases in math at the middle school and it had a large degree to do with some things we did with scheduling and prioritizing those periods of the day. We're seeing gains in the two years that we've done ASPIRE at the high school in math and science. But something I'd say about Silicaga in conclusion is that two-thirds of our students go to college, a third do not. So we want to be sensitive to preparing our students for college and career. And so over the course of these last three years, we've tripled the number of students that have industry credentials when they leave us. We have doubled the number of students that have dual enrollment, college credit when they leave us. We've doubled our advanced placement scores in the last couple of years. So those are things that I think this formula that works in places like Vestaby Hills and Auburn is working in Silicaga when we look at those ideas of equity, excellence, and engagement.
Dr. Freeman, you and I geeked out a little earlier today talking about books that we like to read to learn new stuff. How do you foster a culture of learning amongst the employees and the system? And what have you done programmatically, historically to enable that?
Well, learning is fundamental to any profession and unfortunately, the education world's been vilified for too many years. And so it's incumbent for us to make sure we maintain a high degree of professionalism. And that means you've got to be a lifelong learner. So in terms of a culture, I'm thinking this way. A culture is really about four things. You've got the mission, you've got the values or beliefs of an organization, you've got students and their outcomes, and you've got your staff. And everybody's got to be plugged into and in agreement with all those things for a culture to be thriving. So specifically with staff, I'm going to say this, it's important to lead from the front. If I'm going to have a culture of learning in a system, it needs to be portrayed from the offices of the superintendent and board. Now, as a principal, I did a couple of book studies with my entire staff, every person on our teaching team that was specific about conversations to be a better high school, to talk about how we need to read more, just conversations about learning and how important that is. So I wanted them to know specifically that my role as a principal is to be the lead learner. Our board for our trainings, you know, you've got to do this two-hour training each year, and we try to make it very meaningful. And so we've had work sessions that were on data analysis, very deep, fine-grained analysis in our schools. We've done a couple of book studies. I'm a book study guy, David, so you know I feel about that. We did book studies on Creating Innovators by Tony Wagner, a book study entitled Our Kids by Robert Putnam, things that we think are relevant to our needs and our system. So we want to lead from the front. But I'm interested in any organization, in terms of what are those personal initiatives that people do themselves? That says a lot about their motivation to learn. Think about your staff for a minute. Seventy-five percent of your staff, your teachers, have advanced degrees. That's impressive. Ten percent of your staff have national board certifications. Three of your principals have doctorate degrees, one of them's pursuing it. The fundamentals look real good. You've got this robust professional learning program, you've got a teacher leader program. There are a lot of those things that suggest the culture is good. So then I want to ask these questions about this culture, is what are we doing to cause these student outcomes? And if we're just doing a lot of things that really don't matter, then what do we need to do to cause the student outcomes? So I think that's where we start the conversational culture. And in our system, we've tried to support our teachers a couple of different ways. We have cohorts established where our board provides scholarships for teachers to go through master's programs and EDS programs and national board certifications. We looked at a study by the Business Educational Alliance in two thousand and fourteen of the top-performing schools on the spire, and you guys happen to be at the top, but one of the things that was in that study is that more than ten percent of all those faculties had national board certifications. So we use that as a basis for starting to build those credentials for our students because we think that makes a difference, you know, when teachers have those additional certifications. And I will say this also as well in conclusion, Maslow's hierarchy of needs is important in a culture as well. So we've established things in our system. We have a wellness program our teachers can participate in, so for twenty-five bucks a semester, you can be a part of a wellness program, fitness and things. We think that's important to vitality. We provide an employee assistance program for our employees for any matters and problems that they may have. Of course, I mentioned scholarship things that we do, and we have memberships to local young professionals associations. So we try to think beyond just the academic piece and how do we make our folks feel supported and know that we're behind them? So that's how I believe we go about fostering that culture.
Dr. Freeman, can you talk a little bit about your strengths as a leader and as a administrator and what areas that you may target for personal development?
Leadership can be hard to define sometimes, but you need to be able to find it, describe it, measure it, and there are certainly there are ways to do that. But just from a personal perspective, my parents instill me certain virtues, the virtues of faith, virtues of hard work, the importance of education, the importance of working with people, empathy, compassion, all of that drives my thinking. I'm a traditional thinker, and so my leadership is governed by those virtues. And so I think through a lens of leadership when I think about it that way. So I have over the last several years done a lot of things with coaching about me. And so I've gone through this series of profiles, and you've probably done some of these type things, but this has been where I've concentrated most of my learning, is to learn about myself. And so I've done things like the Big Five Workplace Profile, the DISH Profile, of course, the emotional intelligence quotient test and things like that, just to learn about who this person is because I look in the mirror and I think I know, but I want to know how others see me. And so I had a lot of executive coaching on it as well, just to help me because basically, here's what I have high energy for. I'm a planner. I'm spreadsheet-driven a lot of times. You can ask my wife about that, probably to a degree sometimes it's not always helpful. I'm a structural person, I'm an analytical person. I'm not averse to change, but I need to see data and I need to see evidence and I need to have a good understanding before we move forward with some change or something that we would do different. From a late relationship perspective, I have a little lower energy for social components, but I thrive in environments where there's professional conversation like this taking place. So the things that I particularly like to do well from a relationship perspective is working with teams. I'm a consensus person, I'm a peacemaker, so I like to make sure that there's consensus built when we do that. So those are the things from a leadership perspective. I've spent probably eight years doing this and I continue to learn a lot about myself because I want to make sure I know what others are saying about me. I will tell you, I also am a part of a cohort at Central University of superintendents that some that you know, some that you're interviewing are part of that cohort. It's a fine group because I'm challenged as a learner and we concentrate in those meetings about engagement. So we talk about how to engage community, how to engage parents, how to engage students. All of that is right in the wheelhouse of what I want to focus on, which is being good at relationships. The fundamentally most important thing a leader can do is establish trust in relationships. And that happens when you establish trust. And trust happens when you didn't display a character and you've displayed confidence in what you're doing. So all those things have to take place before a leader has any sort of effectiveness. That's my viewpoint.
I'll take a second quarter.
Hey, that's good. You're a smart guy.
And while you're sitting, I will ask my question. If you've hired personnel in the past, central office, principals, faculty, et cetera, what qualities do you look for in those individuals who come and work for your school system? And with those people in mind, why would they, why do they want to come and work for you?
Thank you, Steve. That's a good question. The fundamental things, at the very baseline, I'm interested in is I'm interested in their ability to maximize those things they've got high energy for. Because, you know, if I just break this down into four things about leaders, that they're either analytical, structural, they're conceptual, or they're social, none of those are bad things. I mean, I tend toward analytical and structural. All of those are good things if you maximize that, that you have this high energy for. So I want to know if somebody really leverages those things well. I also want to know that they don't turn those things into weaknesses. In other words, I try to guard closely against any form of micromanagement because that can happen when you're structural, I think, or a planner. And so I work more on the other side of the role to engage people and be a part of the social piece. So I'm looking at that, just at the fundamental level. More importantly than the intelligence side of things, I want to know what their emotional quotient looks like. What are their abilities to be self-aware about, what do they know about themselves? What are their abilities to self-regulate themselves? What's their motivation level? What's their empathy level? Those things drive the ability of a leader to be successful. Before I even talk about central office or principal, so I'm thinking about those things. Central office, the way I view the role of the central office is like the military structure of a staff officer. And you have staff officers and then you have this commanding side. And so I'm not referring to the potential commanders, they're far from that, but if you think about that analogy, the staff officers are well-equipped and equipped with these leadership skills, but they become specialists in these areas, and that's what they do. Now, in the military structure, what happens is those staff officers often become the field generals, the battalion commanders that go out there. That's kind of opposite the way we do it in our world. My experience, I was lucky because I became, was a teacher, became a central office administrator, then became a principal. It gave me a whole different viewpoint of what the people do in that office across the street. And you know what they do? They're about supporting the school. So I'm interested in those leaders or those skills that have a sole interest in supporting the classroom. Because if you're interested in the service of the system in some sort of selfish way, then you can't fit in a service role. That's my traditional kind of viewpoint of servant leadership. Our sole responsibility is support. Now, principals are a little bit different. You want principals to be able to see all of those things at a micro level, all of the staff areas. Most principals have not been central office people, sometimes that does happen, but you want them to understand how that works and understand what the system of support that works in that capacity. But I'm interested in those people who are good at relationships. That's the business. The principals are the ones who drive any change or any significant work in a system. It doesn't come from this officer, from the staff office, it comes from those field generals. And so I'm looking for that person that can multitask needs of being a relational person, a planner, conceptual thinker, a visionary, all that's important. Well, I asked some of my employees, what do you think about, why would you want to work for? And I'm pretty sure they were honest, you know how that is, a little bit awkward, I suppose, but they may be thinking, this guy's about to leave, I don't know what I think. So I asked them, just tell me what you think, because that's important to me, I want to know if shots are of it. But the idea is this, that you're going to be in a position of leadership and you're going to have autonomy to do your job. I'm going to know micro details, but I'm going to lead macro. You're going to lead the micro work. Principals, you're going to hire your staff, you're going to ask your staff to find something else to do because you are in charge of those buildings. So you have autonomy in your decision-making. I'm going to support that. I want to guide you around policy and around vision of our system, but ultimately, those are your responsibilities. I'm going to hold a high degree of professionalism in our office and in the schools, and I want you to be an academic, I want you to be a good relational person. So professionalism is very important. So all of those skills are pieces of things that I think are important and why folks I think want to work for.
You've talked some about collaborating with your staff and Daniel Kinson's system and so on, but could you talk a minute about how you like to communicate with your employees and get their feedback?
I cannot express how important it is to have face-to-face, one-to-one interaction with your team. It doesn't matter really how large they are. Some of the most beneficial things I've ever done in the system are those phone calls to teachers who've lost a loved one or dealing with some circumstance, personal letters writing to them from some issues they may be dealing with. It could be sitting at the lunch table with a teacher who wants to tell me all they think about why the schedule and calendar needs to look different. And it's the meetings in the hallway with a math teacher who says, this is how we can better serve our kids in pre-AP classes, let's look at doing that next year. That's where I'm learning with everything. So at the very basic level, the most important thing I can do is listen to the people who really are doing the work, listen to what they have to say. So I want to communicate certainly in that fashion, so a lot of listening. We started superintendent advisory team that's made up of teachers from all of our schools. We did that when we started. And this year, I'd say by now, about twenty percent of our teachers have been a part of that team. We meet quarterly, we develop agendas, and they are the voice, so to speak, to come to a meeting. We talk about relevant things in their school. We've had a lot of conversations that have led to policy changes, the way we do calendar, the way we do scheduling, all of that's in our result. And it's not usurping the power of a principal, but it's wanting to listen and make sure I've got the full context of things that are important to them. I've had great opportunities to be in meetings, and I routinely come to an RTI meeting or data meetings, grade level meetings. I've been to C and P meetings in Charleston, I love to go to those meetings because I learn so much about the program itself. Anyplace where I can listen and hear, we had transportation meetings where I was planning to put the transportation, our buses in one location, and they helped me understand why that's not a good idea. And so we changed that. Listening to people is really important to me. Just from a talking perspective, we have annual professional development when everybody comes together, and that's really driven by what their needs are. And most always, teachers overwhelmingly say they want support in teaching students of diverse backgrounds. So all of our system-wide development when everybody's together is going to focus on diversity, but that's one of those things, for example, that we do. But I do meetings with faculties as well. I think that's extremely important because I want them to hear a system conversation. For example, when we did tax renewal a couple of years ago, the finance and construction work, I spoke to all the faculties on why we're doing this, why it's an important thing, how it will benefit all of our schools. That's something that we do. I'll be doing some sessions in the coming weeks with faculties about the safer port card that's coming out because we need to be able to understand that as a group, what that's looking like. They need to hear from the superintendent at times. So there's a good combination, but a lot more listening than talking.
Your superintendent advisory team, how do you go about comprising the faculty that's on that? Do they serve a certain time with somebody else?
Yeah. We serve, they serve one year, so we end up having, I think, five meetings through the course of the year, and those are always held after school, but I get the input from principals. And now, look, I've got a staff that are one-hundred-and-fifty-plus teachers, so I've got a good knowledge of a lot of them. Of course, early on, I did not, so I value the principal's opinion. Tell me who would be a good representative, a fair-minded representative, an honest person because that's the only grandeur in my meetings, she must be honest with me because what we do at this table here is important for kids. And so I ask the principals, I get a large information from them, then I select who those should be.
Dr. Freeman, you've talked about communication with employees. Can you talk a little bit about communication with the public and specifically how you use the social media as a means to communicate with your broader community?
And, you know, that word broader, phrase broader community means something different now because of social media, and so we're very attentive to that. When we started, after we developed our strategic plan in Silicaga, we developed an organizational chart to support implementation of that. And one of the things we did was I looked within my staff about who would be a good public relations person. I needed somebody like Whit that could manage those things from a central office level. And so what we did, you know, I found one, I've got a C and P director that was a public relations person in their former career. So it's unusual, as it may sound, I have a C and P director slash public relations director, but she's outstanding. And so we centralized the communication to our community. And so the way we do that is obviously through press releases, but she has PR teams at each of the schools that feed us information, so we're constantly pushing things out. Look, our idea with communication is we want to control the message, just a transparent message, but we want to control it being about our vision, what we're doing, but not about any of the things out ancillary that could get in the way of our vision and our mission. So that's the way we go about it. Now, we use social media a great deal, like many school systems do. We've got an app like Vestaby Hills does, but the large, the analytics are real clear for us, and our parents like Facebook. I'm not sure our students really use it as much anymore, but our parents, that's our world, Facebook is, and so we publish all of our information through that. world, Facebook is, and so we publish all of our information through that. We did through some through Instagram, Twitter as well, but that's our major mode of communication, social media, so everything gets pushed out. I found great value over the years in video. Since I can't talk to all the 12,000 citizens in Silicaga and then that is part of a broader community, there's a certain connection to video. So we do videos. I did a series of videos on the tax initiative a couple of years ago. I've done videos at times where we've had to talk to the community about certain situations that are coming up. I'll be doing a series of videos on the report card to try to have the fall understanding. It's amazing how many people look at those things. We had, you know, I'm in a community of 10, 12,000 people, but in two days, when we did one of our tax initiatives, we had 10,000 views within 48 hours. And we're a small community, so it's impactful and important. Aside from that, I like to do annual conversations. So annually, I meet with service clubs, I meet with the chamber, I meet, of course, our Board of Education gets his information before any of them do, but I meet with the city council, they're important partners. So they hear what I would refer to as the state of schools each year, because they're invested partners in our community. That's an important piece of that communication flow that we have. Just from a social media perspective, personally, I use Twitter and I use LinkedIn. And you can go on the site there, I don't do a whole lot with it from a social perspective because that's not my world, but from a professional perspective, it allows me to send out things that I think are important for people to hear. I do a monthly commentary during the school year, and really, that's the place to learn about who I am and my philosophy, but that gets pushed out on our Facebook, I put it out on Twitter, LinkedIn, of course. Our newspapers run that, and I speak those out over the radio locally. So we try to provide every means that we can to provide that flow of communication to our community, and it's been effective.
Earlier you had a mention of collaboration, and, you know, how do you know, this is sometimes the ultimate decision-maker of your collaboration, kind of you think you have to hold attention? How do you decide when it's time to listen and learn, versus someone has to make a call and press ahead? And so that kind of balances collaboration and leadership.
Okay, my DISC profile, if you're a DISC subscriber, I'm an S and a C. And so I'm over here on the steady and conscientious side, I like consensus building, I like good information, all those kind of things. The D is way over here, the dominant, that's, I'm on the opposite side of that. Look, Solomon was pretty wise in his day, and this proverb that he says that I use is sort of a philosophical thing for me about collaboration is, I'm going to paraphrase Solomon, I can't speak his words, but he is the fool who does not listen to the council of advisors. And so that's the way I think. Individual leadership is necessary at times. There are safety issues, there are personnel issues, there are policy things, there are times that the person must lead, and I have no problem with doing those things, but most of the time, decisions have long-term impacts and they need a lot of conversation and thought. So authentic collaboration, I'll use a Greek, a Greek explanation of what the word dialogue means, and that means meaning flowing through. So it's not me talking at people, it's not me telling people what we're going to do and then y'all get on board about it. But it is a conversation, when you have true collaboration that's taking place. I believe certain things. I'll give you an example of collaboration that we do. I believe that from an equity perspective, all of our kids need information, and we couldn't provide that to them with textbooks, but we could with Chromebooks. And so that was an equity issue to me, but I did not decide how that needed to look in classrooms. So our digital by design program took place, and all of the work to make it happen happened with all the stakeholders, parents, students, teachers, to make that actually go into place. So there's some vision things I think are important, I believe, from that I have strong beliefs about. But by and large, it's about long-term thinking and planning, and that requires a lot of talk. And by the way, collaboration needs to involve more than people at the center or at the apex of a decision. And so those who are impacted by it need to be a part of the decision, but so should those on the outskirts of decisions. Certainly, teachers always should have voice in things that are happening in their classroom, principals should in their building. I had a very wise administrative assistant in Auburn, his name was Marvin Brown, and he said something that I've thought about in so many different ways, when he said, "Dr. Freeman, you built that gym over there," but he said, "Don't put the sidewalks down for about six months. So let the people walk and make their own paths, and then lay the sidewalk down." You know, we laid the sidewalk down before we really know where the people are going to walk? And so what he was saying to me is he's not a guy that sat at the table when we built buildings, but that's a very common sense, wise way to think about things. So oftentimes, the wisdom can come from outside that circle, and so that's important. And you have to think about that from that perspective. So that's how I view collaboration. I think that's important. Now, here's what I'd say about pushing forward and holding back. Most oftentimes, conversation, dialogue grinds to a halt because we lose the sense of why we are talking about something. We start talking about the how and the what. And I will tell you candidly, when we started this digital by design initiative and this group gets together, they started going down the road of what happens if they break their Chromebook, what happens if they get in trouble? And we lose focus of why we are doing this. And so when you want to push something forward, I think it's always important to get back to the why. And when you're communicating with people, you're collaborating with them, most of the time you can get on that why level, the how and the what will follow. But oftentimes, we lose that sense, David, when we do that. So I think about it from that perspective, and sometimes you've just got to listen. Sometimes there is not a solution to every problem. It's about being in the moment. And collaboration, a lot of times, is just about being a good listener, and I've said this before already, but an effective leader is doing a whole lot more listening and a whole lot more questioning than they are telling.
You're a higher class or a lower class student?
I'm very much a higher C. Yeah.
I'm a minority. Ah, won't you be surprised?
I thought so.
This is the next question I would pay to the board. So can you think of a situation that you're in, and you're charged with community, and what opinions you have, and then a part of a resolution in that situation?
Yeah. Happens in every system. This board deals with those things, all boards deal with it. The schools are a microcosm of the community. So they bring to the school the values, the problems, all those things come, and we inherit those whether we want them or not. And you know that schools have always been the place where we have tried to solve societal ills, been going on for a long time, that's what the public schools do. In large part, that's a good reason to have schools. So it's really important to have wisdom and discernment when you deal with these highly-charged situations, not to overreact, it's in my psyche not to do that, but you know, when you're thrust into it, you kind of want to do something really quick. So differentiating about what happens quickly to deal with the fruit problem is a lot different than what needs to happen to deal with the root problem. In Silicaga last fall, we inherited what I think was a highly-charged political atmosphere in our nation, it was the election season. There were social movements throughout our nation and in our communities that were racially divisive. During homecoming week, we had dress-up days, and Dr. Burgess knows how much fun those things can be. But on one particular day, we had a dress-up day, that something was put on a T-shirt that created a little bit of a verbal altercation in the cafeteria. That was handled, settled well, but what resulted on social media that evening was a lot of insensitive comments that I would say were racially insightful. And by the way, adults were as equal parts of this, as students were. Well, we made it through homecoming week, but that Friday evening after the game, one of our students, part of an off-campus gathering, was assaulted by four individuals that were not students. But a lot of what happened led up to that. So over the weekend, we're preparing for what we know could be a difficult situation on Monday. We take some immediate steps with supervision and security and things of that nature. I call all the parents, not individually, but I call our system and say, here's what's happening. So people show up on Monday, and then we have a physical altercation. And that began to inflame an issue quickly. And so we had to be smart, we had to do a couple of things in the short term. One of those was to communicate a very clear message of transparency and a communication message of what our expectations are for student behavior. And so we did that very quickly. Our media message was one that was very emphatic. I had news people from all over the place that wanted to come and see what was happening. So we had to keep them away so we could communicate what was the important message to make sure our parents felt a calm about their students being there. So we hamped up security, we hamped up administrative presence, and did all those things to put our parents at ease. And we also said, if you don't send your child to school, you're worried about safety, that's fine, we're not going to deal with absences on these particular days because we know the volatility exists. So a couple of days, all of those things calmed down. Our board had to take some unfortunate action to deal with some disciplinary things, but they had to be done in the short term to address the fruit issue. And, you know, interestingly enough, through the whole process, you know who handled this best, were our high school students. They were superb. It was, as one of my community advisory members told me, this is a grown folks issue, not a student issue. They handled it great. They even were proactive in bringing in ministers and advisors from the community just to talk to students, let's just talk these things through. So that was fantastic to even watch take place. Over the long haul, we developed a community advisory team. I did a lot of listening during that time to what they had to say, and it was a very diverse group to help us through it. It helped me develop a plan for professional development for our students, excuse me, for our staff, which we still are doing those things a year later. We have a partnership with Scholastic to help us in how we communicate and work with those that are different from us. And, you know, we're still growing, we're still growing, but what it gave us the opportunity to do was to delve into the root of why these things occur. I mean, to the point that we started talking about, how can we have a community literacy program that's going to really engage this place to say, we all need to learn how to read, because that's the gateway to the future? So we could get it to that point, and I think we made a successful one. We have to be aware that those things exist, and every school is just a split second away from one of those things. So you want to have a good plan in place for the short term and long term.
Dr. Freeman, a long way, what was your experience with the first citizen population in the community, and how did you capitalize on the doors of the community?
I so appreciate the belief that you state in your strategic plan, that diversity strengthens the community. I think that's important, and it means a lot different than just race, gender. There are a lot of things about diversity, every community has it. In where I work down in Silicaga, our diversity mostly has to do with socioeconomics. That's allowed for us to have really good conversations about community buy-in. If I can maybe use an African proverb, we've talked a lot about the village idea of how we all have to work together, and there are those that are in need that we can help. And so it's led to things equitable type conversations. We have strong partnerships with our school, with our local mental health provider that helps a lot of situations. We talked a little bit this morning about those adverse childhood experiences and how many of those happen to be for children in poverty, but they also happen to everybody else. So it's had us, allowed us to have very fruitful and good conversations about how we help our students. In Auburn, I've mentioned to you, that diversity took a whole different look, because we had, it was a multicultural place, we were in a major university town, so over 40 languages are spoken in the homes of people. And so it was a richness that you understand in a place that's diverse. Even as a teacher, I loved it, because I can remember the student Deepak that I had that was native-born in India, and so when I got in my geography classes to the study of Asia and to talk about Hinduism, well, I don't need to say a whole lot, because I've got an expert sitting over here. And so in our language classes, like German and French, I mean, we weren't just learning the language, we've got kids from those areas. And so it brings a richness to any kind of environment you can, as long as you embrace that idea of difference makes us better. That's what we've been able to do, and while those are really different ideas of diversity, you know, it doesn't matter, you know, even in a community like yours, you've got some different locations in your city. That's diversity, because they have different thoughts about how things ought to be, and that inclusiveness only makes the community better.
Can you tell us something about your mom and your dad, and what they have to do with this?
Yeah. Well, it's a team effort. My wife is, she's a lot better team member than I am, as far as those things go, but we have a team approach to this whole thing. And I'll share a story with you. We accepted the job at Silicaga in June of 2013, and Rachel said to me that it is the goal to be in Silicaga before you start working. I started on July 1st. So we got after it pretty quick, didn't we? We moved in the day before I started working, because we wanted to be a part of the community, we wanted to engage ourselves that way. That was important to us. And so I serve on a lot of different boards as part of my responsibilities. I serve on the local family resource center board that does a lot of work for us, particularly in after-school programs and supports outside of school. I serve on the chamber of board, I asked to be on that board because that's an important network of people, business leaders in the community to be a part of. I serve on, I served in Rotary and actually was made president about six months after I got there. That's what happens when you're the new guy on the block. So being a part of that has been enjoyable as well. I serve as a board member for the Easter Seals Group. That has been important for us because the Easter Seals provide speech clinics during the summer. And because of my affiliation with that, we've been able to add that into the southern part of the counties, that's been productive. Of course, as well. Rachel does things in this team approach, she actually is the director of the after-school program for our grades three through eight, and that's administered through something outside of our schools. She volunteers with the foundation, as do I. She is a part of the arts council, she's a secretary of the arts council, and we've got a local one that's a vibrant one as well. And worked for a while in the perform, dancing and performing arts area, that's a strength area for her as well. So it's more than just involvement, though, it's really engagement for us, that we participate in the 5K runs, we go to the arts events, we go to the fundraisers. One of the most fun, one of the most fun experiences I have had was being a part of the high schools' business associations, philanthropy efforts, where they did fundraising to overcome a disease. We had a teacher that had a debilitating and unfortunately terminal disease, and I got to, I got to play the piano and sing as part of that. I just was honored to get to do it, but engagement means a lot more than just serving on boards. And we're active at our church, both of us are, and our children are active in our local church. With a four-year-old, we're starting to get active in parks and recreation. We did soccer the first time this year, if you want to call four-year-old soccer, soccer. That's what we did, I think it's more hurting, so I'm not real sure Sam even touched the ball, in fact, but that was important. So those have been beneficial things to us, and we feel a part of the community, and we think it's important to add value to the community that way.
Dr. Freeman, who stepped up to the mic? You first.
Well, yeah.
Can we talk about the impact of the touch as well? What is the problem or the effects of the career that we've such sports and arts clubs have had on school experience?
Well, I was raised with a football or baseball or basketball in one hand, the other hand playing the piano, and I do my best at singing. It's ingrained in me, and before I really even knew how important it was, it's just something that I did. We did, we had a lot, my family sacrificed a lot for me to do those things, but boy, they have had a life-changing impact for me. If you think about it, visualize it this way, academics is the seat of the stool, and on a three-legged stool, it is best supported by arts, by extravagant activities, by athletics. I think they're all very important. So here are some realities about it. Academics is largely a measure of intelligence. These other things add value to the emotional quotient that people need to be successful, because the reality is, and a study was done of this by God and Daniel Goldman, that in the workplace, 4% to 10% of your success has to do with those intelligence skills. The rest of it has to do with your emotional skills. I find some, I find some interesting parallels in some of this Greco-Roman architecture that are at your city doorsteps when you come in. The Greeks, you know, had this idea about classical education, that's where we focus on knowledge, we focus on debating, questioning, and we focus on expression. They understood how important expression was to a good education, so that's what these things do. Google did a study just this past year where they looked at the eight qualities of their most effective people, and this is a STEM industry, and number eight was the STEM knowledge. Everything above it were all of those other skills that you learn, that the arts help you with, that athletics help you with, that activities help you with. Because what they do is they stimulate the right Because what they do is they stimulate the right side of the brain. They make that right side, they stimulate creativity, innovation, expression, all of those things that are really the true difference makers in the workplace. I mean, knowledge is kind of a given today. So just from a scientific perspective, that's exactly what it does. And look, the data are very clear that those who are involved in those things have better attendance, they have better grades, they have better behavior. There are a lot of correlations to put them together. I think it's very important and in our school system over the last four and a half years, we have added a core program to our middle and high school. We've added an additional band instructor for our middle school. We added a theater program in our high school. We already had a visual arts program and we added art in our elementary school. So now all of our students, K through five, get art and music by specialists. And then they have the opportunities to do these other things when they get in the secondary level. So I certainly think it's important, it's a priority in our budget.
Is there a role in budget development in our school management?
If there's one thing that I tend to do at the micro level, it is budgeting. There are certain things that will get you in trouble as a superintendent and money's right at the very top of that list. So I have, I'm very attuned to what's happening budget-wise. I view budgets this way, I've got a strategic plan and so everything we do with the budget needs to fit the strategic plan primarily to support teaching and learning and support systems. I look at things that I want to be high performance and low cost. And in our system, we've been able to do certain things like class sizes, repurposing, focusing on class sizes, repurposing staff for certain needs, implementing new programs. I mentioned art programs and we've done this while we decreased our staff and while we decreased our budget because we were losing students. So it's very important that you budget, but it's also important to know that you can do things when you prioritize them a certain way. So there are two budgets generally that I'm working with throughout the year. The one's the general fund side that includes special revenues and the other side is capital. And so we start a process in September when we get this 20-day count and Greg understands this, once you get that count, you know how many kids you're gonna get funded for next year. So we know that. In October, November, we're looking at a report we provided with the state that tells us how much our employee payroll is going to be the following year because that's 85% of your budget. You really need to know that information. So what are their years' experience, their degrees and so forth? I begin to have meetings at that point with my principals and saying, "Here's what your numbers look like. You need to begin thinking about what your staffing is gonna look like." So in January, we start finalizing staffing numbers, we start finalizing academic programs, any changes that we're gonna make so we can start putting the budget together. And so then we sit and kinda wait for the state legislature to come up with our budget. Once we get that, I know my revenue, I have to guess with federal revenue, but it's pretty consistent. So we generally have ideal revenue. We build our payroll budget in June, we build our department budgets in July and we start our budget hearings with our board meetings. So interestingly enough, in August, we have three budgets that we're working. We're working on the budget that we're in currently, the one that we're wanting to get approved. And I'm already beginning to work in September on the following budget. This is where this analytical structural infatuation I have comes out because I wanna always be planning ahead. On the capital side, what we're looking at are more like five and 10-year trends because our capital's funded largely because of the commitment of our city to provide ad valorem for those type things. So I'm looking at those revenue trends always. And then there are three things that I'm thinking about with capital. I'm looking at student growth and for us, that's marginal, for you, you gotta think about it. In Auburn, we had 5% growth every year, so I've gotta be thinking about that. And the fact is, once your building's reached about 80% capacity, you better be planning for the next ones or some type of growth. Then I'm looking at facility assessments, what things need to be done to help, just basic things that have to happen in a building. And then I'm also looking at academic programs, career programs that we may add, that we may have to put a kitchen in or a computer lab in. So all of that budget has got to be placed so it supports the things we're doing on the general fund side. So it's a sweet spot for me, it's the spreadsheet, things that drive my life sometimes. It's an important part of it. I want to be very involved. I have a very capable CSFO as you do, but I cannot imagine not knowing more of the micro level of what's happening with budgets. So that's me.
So for my next question, considering your approach here in the state of Queens, can you talk about the strengths and areas you're familiar with?
Well, I would answer it by saying that I would be asking a lot of questions. If you think about moving into a system, it would be ill-advised to go in with some grandiose idea of what needs to be done differently. But I mentioned to you a while ago that when you look at culture, that's particularly important, is I wanna assess the culture. Do those things align and do they work together? Mission, the beliefs, the student outcomes, the teacher excellence, do those things all work together? That's a really important piece I wanna know. And are we doing the things that are causing what we want to happen? And if we're not, what do we need to do to cause it to happen? So I'm asking those questions. But I'm also interested in the conditions that we need to have in our system that I mentioned to you earlier today, the conditions that support optimal learning. And I'm interested in the competencies, as I said earlier, about the excellence of our staff. So those fundamentals look good, but that's a good basis to where we start this conversation. And so three questions then are what we need to figure out in any system we come to. What are the things we wanna maintain and that we're doing really well? What are the things that we wanna improve upon? And what are the things we need to throw out and start over with? And so ask those questions and you start getting the answers you need in terms of what strengths are and what areas that you need to improve upon are. So that's how I would go about that. I think it would be a lot of listening. And Dr. Jay Googe, when he came to Auburn University in 2007, he embarked on what he called a year-long listening tour where he went to all these departments and listened to all the people. We did that in Silicon Valley. We spent almost six months on a strategic plan before we ever really did any kind of significant changes to the system. So a listening tour is really important, hearing from the folks that are doing the work, the parents that are part of it and seeing. You start developing the patterns that you know are important to focus on.
We've been in line since I came in. We're working ahead a lot that our people are contributing to what we care for. And this is, this is you want to, you tell us that you can fly, that you can fly and use.
Well, let me thank you for the opportunity. I'm actually very honored. This is not something that I take lightly, the opportunity to sit on this stage in this beautiful facility that you finished up. To be a part of something like this, just to be a part of your process is meaningful to me and I'm thankful for that. Over the years, I've been a part of two wonderful school systems, been a part of one and in one now. And there are things I don't have to tell you about excellence in schools and why you wanna be a part of something. But think about this for a minute, these are things that you already know about yourself. I'm gonna talk about your outcomes for a minute. The students that take your ACT, 75% of those get one of the benchmarks of the four sub-tests. That's impressive. Even more impressive is 54% of them benchmark on all of those sub-tests and that's an indicator of how they'll do in college. 83% of your students last year made a qualifying score on an AP exam. That's impressive. When they start graduating, it's impressive to me that 89% of them wanna go to college. This is a college-going culture. You've established that, the data are very clear about how important college can be. Of that 89%, 2/3 of those get scholarships offered to them. Last year, your senior class had over $31 million in scholarship offerings. What's even more impressive is what happens when they go to college. 3% of them need some form of remediation in English. The national average is about 14%. 4% of them need some remediation in math. That average is about 26% nationally. That's impressive. They're ready to go to college. The six-year completion rate is impressive. Nationally, it's 54%. In your system, it's 83%. So all those fundamentals are great. Your finances are incredible. You've got great credit ratings, can't do it any better than you in credit-wise. You've got a tremendous reserve, you have all these fundamentals, your class sizes look good, you've got all the programs that are being offered. Those are fantastic things. You have a foundation that provided over $58,000 to your schools for different things last year. Your PTOs provided over a half a million dollars in fundraising directly back into the classrooms. Those are impressive type things. So this litany of excellence in this system is impressive in its own right and so one might say, "Why in the world wouldn't you be a part of a community like this?" The answer to your question though is twofold for me. I'm a husband and I'm a father and that's my priority. And so in a community that believes these things, they believe faith is important, they believe diversity is important, they believe school and education is important, they believe community is important. And you know what? That's in your belief statement. That's what you say. That lines up with our values as a family. I wanna be a part of a community and have been, have had the great privilege of being a part of communities like that where those things are important and I want to learn and grow and I want our family to learn and grow with those values and I want us to add value to a community. As a professional, look, this is, this is, this is a school system that, I'm gonna use Dr. Mason's terminology here that he used one time, that this is a school system that's almost at a 10, but they're looking to be at the next 10. And that's an impressive thing for a professional to wanna be a part of is finding the next 10. Dr. Burgess has got this student leadership group that has taken this phrase, "The rebel edge," and they've taken this acronym and say, "E" is for excellence, "D" is for different, "G" is for grit, "E" is for elevation. That speaks to me as a professional. Those are meaningful things. I wanna be a part of something that will expand me, that will grow me. I will learn far more from a community like the Stevie Hills than they will learn from me, but I wanna add value back to that. I wanna drive to the next 10 that we wanna get to. Those are important things. You have a very important job. The five of you will probably sit together for a more important decision that you're gonna make for who's gonna lead your system over the next several years. For us, it's a commitment. I've got a two-year-old, a four-year-old and we're gonna raise our children in a place where we wanna be settled and that's what we wanna do. It's an important commitment to us, but you have to decide. You got three exceptional candidates and then you got me. I'm a small-town boy. I've always dreamed big. I wanna be a part of something special. And just to have this opportunity is emotional to me because you work toward some pinnacles like this. And so that's me. That's what I'm about. That's why I think that we can contribute to the good of the state of schools. I wish you the best. You've got a task before you. I pray for your wisdom and discernment in the process and thank you so much for the opportunity and privilege to meet your team today and to spend time with you and to be a part of the special event.
Thank you, Dr. Freeman. It's been a great Q and A, very important for us. Thank you all again for coming and singing and we have a standing charge.